I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, everyone, please remain standing. We have to ask Pastor John Hearn, please come give us a prayer.
Eternal and kind God, we come to you once again with thankful and grateful hearts. We're thankful, Lord, for this opportunity. You have afforded us once again to assemble ourselves to take care of the matters that are of concern to our community. We pray, Lord, that you will endow us with the necessary wisdom and knowledge to govern efficiently so that all of the citizens of our community will be benefited and that there will be protection for each and every citizen. We pray, Lord, for this body of leaders. We pray for our police department and all of those that have positions of authority. We pray for your protection for each and every one of them and the entire citizenry. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Well, I just called my building official's name. Okay. Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? I'm sorry, roll call, roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Whiteley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm. We have seven, is absent, I'm sorry. We have seven pres- six presidents. We do have a court.
He should be on the way, but he's not here yet. Okay. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? We're going to replace the first presentation Gulfstream Gardens with Laserfish Records Management presentation. We're going to replace that, too. We'll do Gulfstream at a different meeting, and we're going to have the second proclamation. We're going to go forward with that. Proclamation for Michigan Community Health Workers. Any other changes or anything we need to add to the agenda?
You deleted some stuff off the agenda.
Okay, we deleted item D.
And.
Because the property owner's not here, and item K.
You're going to add K because you're going to vote that was taken into our question.
Okay. And we're going to add, we add another item. I guess we can call it K, although if we eliminated D, we should move them all the way up. But the item that we discussed in closed session that we voted on. So we're going to, we'll come out and take the vote out here. You forgot what we voted on. Look at you.
We didn't discuss K doing orientation.
We didn't.
It's coming off the agenda. That's why we didn't discuss. But we're going to add a new item, what we discussed in closed session. Y'all with me? As to the media, upcoming mediation litigation matter?
Yeah.
Okay. So we all on the same page?
Yeah, we voted.
Oh, you're right. We did.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember.
The organization, if I had an.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Damn, now we remember.
Okay, so we don't need, so no K. So we're just eliminating D and K. Anything else we need to add to the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
And these, these really should have been under new business, but you didn't put them back. Second rule.
Um, I'll move the approval.
Okay. All right. You have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the approval of the agenda with the deletion of letter K.
And D.
And D.
Board.
The problem move supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passed. First presentation, Laserfish Records Management, Mike Lindon. Lighten. Come on up.
Can somebody actually present information about some software?
Somebody give him a mic.
Somebody give him a mic. Ms. Fields?
Thank you very much. This is something that is being deployed throughout the state. There have been a number of changes and advancements going on in state technology. I know that our state courts are moving in the direction of electronic case filing. There is a broad adoption of a new statewide records management system for law enforcement. Prosecutors are looking at this. And when you have the Director of the Department of Technology Management and Budget going around the country talking about how his employees don't even have to come to work anymore because he's supplied them with the technology necessary to do their job from wherever they are with mobile devices. So this is something that is kind of long overdue through municipalities throughout the state of Michigan. And I think that you should be very proud of your government officials for even entertaining this as many others have. And of those many others, I think it's worthwhile talking about the fact that the adoption of this particular technology was recently made after an 18-month review by what is factually the most digitally adept and knowledgeable county in the country, which is Oakland County here in Michigan, who evaluated every piece of software similar to this in the marketplace for over 18 months, and now has, they're implementing over 10,000 user license, I'm sorry, 2,000 user licenses of this application. We're also using this application to replace another similar line of business application in the city of Lansing. I just received a request to add another 120 users to their already 150 users in their environment. So, long way to go. We'll start out with, it's kind of a walk-to-run program. We want to get those departments that are in most, are in greatest need of getting rid of or getting greater access to the information that's on paper today and everything else. The application that we're talking about is Laserfish. It's an electronic content and business process management solution. By that, what I mean is it's one single location for information that can be securely accessed internally and externally. So it really means that it gives the internal employees as well as you, the constituents, access to information when and where necessary with an extremely high level of security. So it's well organized, well maintained, and most easily updated, and we can grow the system as time goes on. The company that I represent that would be implementing this solution is called General Code. We are over a 55-year-old company. Our primary business actually is codification and ordinance development, and we make that also available electronically to our customers. The content management division of our company is approaching our 18th year in business. We have over 400 municipalities that are currently using the application. And of those 400 municipalities, we've been doing this now, and our business really is government, if I didn't make that clear. So we really embrace the idea of working with departments, mostly municipalities and small counties throughout the country. The product itself is embraced by over 35,000 organizations throughout, actually, the world now. And it's recently been recognized as providing singularly the greatest value over time. And value is established based on the fact that the product can actually be updated, configured, modified to the specific needs of the city of Inxter, predominantly even by their own employees, because the tool set necessary to secure a document or to route it through its appropriate business process can be done. And that's actually one of the reasons why the city of Lansing selected the product to replace their current software, or the software that they were currently using. Another great reason for partnering with Laserfish is what they call their business process library. Because of the fact that Laserfish works with so many government agencies and government organizations, and for that matter, even hospitals, colleges, businesses throughout the United States in particular, they've learned that there are a number of best practices and ways to best deploy the application. Things like a freedom of information request. Very simple, you might think, but there is so much of machinations that go on that your clerk has to go through to make sure. And the state has now mandated certain timelines that she must adhere to. The state also has very strong records management policies that the city must adhere to. There are different transactions with regard to accounts payable, accounts receivable, buildings and properties, Department of Public Works, law enforcement for access to closed incident reports. All of these things can be managed, maintained, secured, and yet made available within the applications available. What the business process library does is it offers at no charge to the city pre-configured processes using electronic forms and workflow, which is that content that comes into the city that someone needs to know it exists, and then some ones need to do something about it. So it needs to be, you know, follow a particular routing path without having to take that folder and move it from desk to desk as you have to do in a paper world. So those business processes currently number over 100 that are pre-built, and we've worked with now over the last couple of months, the teams from your city, to help to identify those that would be of greatest value to the city right out of the box. And then going forward, those will be available, and Laserfish itself continues to enhance those and make them, make more yet available for different organizations. Laserfish very much believes in a policy and a process of kind of a, it's a walk-to-run. Let's first get the information organized, digitized, more available to those persons that need to be able to work with it. Let's then run it through a kind of a specific organizational process. So actually, when a user logs into our application, the Laserfish application, only that content that they should have available to them is. So they don't have to look at everything. They don't have to look at every file cabinet standing in front of them. Only those documents that they need to respond to a constituent request for information. And I think that makes things a lot easier for everyone involved. Then we can work more speaking, you know, more efficiently through the processes. Who needs to see it? Why do they need to see it? What do they need to do with it? Our state actually adopted a policy of electronic seals and signatures are now approved and approvable some seven years ago now. So what Laserfish allows for is an electronic signature or an electronic seal to be applied to the content. And then continuously upgrading, modifying, because when you have a team as knowledgeable as your government team seems to have been in my meetings with them, they have a good vision for what they want to be able to go forward. They want to be able to make those modifications and changes that can make things even more efficient over time. Again, it's all about constituent service, and it's all about eventually reducing cost of operations. The application itself, this is one of the screens from it, and what we're really looking at is digitizing and organizing. So along the far side, what you're seeing is actually the folders that that particular person would have. Think of walking up to a file cabinet, and there are different folders sitting in that file cabinet. The inside is the documents that are in the selected folder that they're looking at. One of the things that Laserfish does extremely efficiently is out of the box, it comes with what's called optical character recognition. So if you were to scan a document that was typed, you could actually make it keyword searchable. And what that means is when you have a question about an old agenda item that you might want to have someone do some research on for you, they can actually find it by the word in it. A lot of the conversations in the meeting today have been about, this is my address, this is my problem, this is something that's going on. So they can actually search through past agenda minutes and find the documents that they're looking for much, much more efficiently. So that's, those are some of the things. And then to try to get that information into the application itself, what Laserfish also offers, and it's one of the tools that the city has given review of and is interested in, is what we call, it's an integration tool. It, what it really does is it takes information from one line of business application and can repurpose it without a human having to do it. I joke with people about having, I have dyslexic fingers. I hope that doesn't offend anyone, but it means that when I read a number 12345, I might type it 145 whatever. And some of us, I don't know if you do text messaging and it's always perfect. I don't. But what this means with integration is we can actually read a number set from an incident report or a property identification number, or maybe it's a tax ID number, and it will, the application will read it and repurpose it to help the naming of a document as it comes into Laserfish. So it really simplifies onboarding information coming in. And again, the application isn't just converting paper. It's anything electronic. It's an email attachment. It could be a body camera feed from law enforcement. It could be a cruiser feed. It could be an audio recording. It could be anything electronic. An out-of-the-box Laserfish application integrates seamlessly with all of the Microsoft suite of products. So whether it's Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel, PowerPoint, those applications are out-of-the-box configured and readily available. This integration tool that we use, it's been fully tested with the primary applications used here in the city. BSNA is probably the biggest that they use, buildings, properties, finance, and we integrate seamlessly with that. And we're doing some things, we just went through a test with the city of Monroe where not only are we capturing data from it, but we're now actually even able to take data that we know and push it into specific fields within that application so that it doesn't have to be retyped into that application. Again, making the knowledge worker here in the city much more efficient in their use of the application. I already mentioned the optical character recognition capability, but it even goes beyond that, because you can search for words within a document, within a folder. You can do what's called Boolean search, which is kind of that wildcard kind of thing. I've got a crazy name. It's spelled L-E-I-D-L-E-I-N. Who would ever spell Liedline that way? So if you can, what you can do with Laserfish is you could actually put what's called a wildcard. It's an asterisk in front of an LE, and then a wildcard after that, and it would find every name that started with LE. So it actually makes things a lot easier to find within the application. It can find number strings, because social security numbers through a FOIA request are something that based on Michigan Privacy Protection laws really need to be deleted from a document before it's exposed back out to the public. So all of the considerations with regard to the Michigan Privacy Protection Act, HIPAA, some of the Patriot Act issues are all easily addressed with the use of Laserfish. Some other things that are, actually, I just mentioned that, so we'll kind of skip through that. One of the things that has been added through the selection process that we've discussed is the fact that government is rife with forms. So many of the things that you want information from or that you're applying for as constituents from, from the city, start with a form, whether it's a FOIA request or a dog license request. All of those things start with forms. And Laserfish has a very powerful electronic forms tool where you can take all of those forms and make them online available. That is so much easier for you, the constituents, and it's so much easier for those representatives in government, the knowledge workers here, because then they don't have to also, again, re-enter that data and misspell that crazy name from that guy Liedline. So the other things, and really one of the last things that I think is worth representing here is workflow, or what Laserfish would call business process. And what this really means is when something comes into the city that's important, someone needs to know that it's there. So a workflow process can address that. Some one or ones need to do something about that piece of information that just entered the city. So what Laserfish can do is we can set electronic rules that automatically route that piece of information through the organization. And what business process language also does is it gives instructions to the next user in the process. This is what you need to do. Please review this. Please sign this. Please route this on for accounts payable or receivable. So whatever has to occur, we can actually automate those processes with the Laserfish tools. So realistically, enterprise content management with business process solutions attached have become a tremendous value for a number of municipalities, counties throughout the state, throughout the country, and in almost every case, the paybacks have been tremendous. So is that what you were looking for?
Yes.
All righty. And this is, I've given this to your clerk electronically, so I'm sure that if any of you have follow-up questions after the meeting, she could give, and I'm always available to answer any questions that you have. Anything else?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, everybody, we'll post that on the website so you can look at the presentation anytime you like. But this is one of our initiatives, our Go Green initiative. We're trying to go paperless, because we have no more space to put paper. So it's time to go paperless and stay in the 21st century. Is that where we're at? Okay. Are you green yet? Mayor Pro Tem is already green. He does not use paper. So we're trying to be like him. Okay, next presentation, we have a proclamation for the Michigan Community Health Workers. You want to read, you have this. You have a copy?
I'm going to read it and then, I'm going to present it to you. I'm going to read the proclamation and then Mayor Pro Tem, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Nolan will present it to you. City of Inxter proclamation honoring Michigan community health workers. Whereas we recognize that reaching at-risk, under-resourced, or underserved communities is vital to improving the health of our state's most vulnerable populations. And whereas, community health workers impact the health of urban and rural communities by building trusting relationships with residents as culturally competent members of those communities, and connecting residents to needed health and human service systems. And whereas, more than 600 community health workers who go by dozens of titles serve Michigan residents, helping prevent and manage chronic conditions, develop healthier lifestyles, improve maternal and child health, increase rates of preventive screenings, and improve access to and use of health care and social services through outreach, enrollment, and patient education. And whereas, during this month, we honor and thank community health workers who create bridges between health and human service providers and community members. And whereas, we join with our 36 community partners and more than 800 participants to encourage state officials, Michigan communities, and health and human service delivery agencies to participate with the Michigan Community Health Worker Alliance, and its partners to honor and recognize the vital impact community health workers have in Michigan and the role they play as professional workforce in the delivery of culturally competent health and social services among populations in need. Now therefore, I, Byron Nolan, mayor, and the city council of the city of Inxter, do hereby proclaim August 2017 as Community Health Worker Appreciation Month in Inxter, Michigan.
All right. (applause) I think I see somebody from John Conyers office. Do you have anything for us, Wes? How are you?
Sorry.
All right, glad to see you. We have Mr. Preston Peterson from State Representative Jewel Jones' office. Come on up. He always has something for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Greetings from State Representative Jewel Jones. He's away on maneuvers, serving our country, so I'm here instead. I just have a couple of items. One is, I know all of you are aware of the issue with the Rumbus School Village, and I'll be working with you to hopefully address that issue. Secondly, we're in recess for July and August, and you will be seeing a lot of us in the next two months. We're going to do legislative walks, distribute a lot of information about what's happening in the legislature, but more importantly, on a listening tour, to understand from your perspective what you feel is important to support the community. The other thing I want to point out is August 29, at 6 o'clock, Inxter Recreation Center, we're going to hold a town hall on new business creation, supporting existing businesses, and hopefully trying to find ways to provide grants and support to help develop those businesses further. We're going to bring resources from the state, the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We get SIMCA involved, Michigan Works. We'll also talk about on-the-job training opportunities. So we really want to combine the idea of small business entrepreneurship and training for folks who are either employed and want to do, and want to seek better employment, or people who are unemployed and need some training. So what I'd like to enlist from you is your support on how we can make this a very successful event. We'd like to get the chamber involved and other business organizations, the economic development folks, so that we can really make it a nice event. We're going to do our part to make sure the resources are there, and hopefully the community will take advantage of them. Thank you.
It was what time?
Town Hall?
Barbie?
What time is it?
6 o'clock. Sorry.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to consent agenda. Everybody, everybody looked at the minutes from last meeting? Any corrections, additions, deletions? You have a motion?
Motion that we accept the, the, our agenda?
The board. The problem move supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Boards and commissions.
You skipped.
Did anyone receive Guy Borish's resume today?
Yeah.
That's right there. Okay, I'm sorry. Everybody received that? Guy Borish's resume to be on the condemnation board?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I saw mine. You didn't see it?
I received it, but I didn't have a chance to look at it because.
I'm sorry.
I didn't see it.
Okay, so only a couple folks saw it. You guys want to?
See Stephanie Bradshaw.
Bring this back up next meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. We need five members. So he's one person who's received, we also received a resume of Jim Wright, but I don't think that went out. Did you send that up?
Uh-uh.
He's our building official. One of the, one of the people on our commission has to be our building official. So he's kind of automatic, but his resume will go out tomorrow. And then we have three other people we need to nominate.
Um, Stephanie Bradshaw. Just the person, Mr. Sanders, he said because of some personal issues, he's not going to be able to be on that board. But I think if I explain to him that it's not something that meets every month, it's only, you know, give him a description, he may change his mind.
Okay.
Because this, this board only convenes when an issue has been appealed.
Right. A hearing. This board will conduct hearings and make determinations on what properties need to be condemned and torn down. We have a lot of blight in our community that has been unaddressed. So this, this commission has been dormant for a long time, so we are reviving it so we can move forward and clean up our community. So when we come, hopefully, everyone, let's get some nominations. We need to appoint all five, because we have stuff ready to be taken care of.
Didn't we get Stephanie Bradshaw?
Stephanie Bradshaw, yeah.
She wants to be on the condemnation.
Oh, I thought it was Commissioner Madge. That's what he announced.
That's what it said. But she was one of the people who was turned in for the condemnation.
Oh, really?
She said she wants to be on the condemnation.
Stephanie Taylor. Stephanie Bradshaw.
Stephanie Bradshaw.
Stephanie Taylor's right there.
Yeah, I know. I talked to her about it.
Okay. So do you guys want to vote on Stephanie? Do we have a motion? Or do we want to wait till next meeting and vote on?
Wait till next meeting, please, because this, this email says she wanted to be on the commission.
It did.
I forgot another one, too. I didn't see it.
So I need a couple more nominations, everyone, so let's, let's make sure we have five at the next meeting so we can move forward. Okay, we had some, we had some from last time. Who do we have?
And here it says condemnation.
Okay. I guess that's under, do we have any other nominations for boards and commissions?
Well, we got one to be taken off, off the table.
Yeah, that's, I was going to go to that next, but we can do it now. Do we have a motion to take that off the table?
A commotion to, um, the downtown development mission moved from the table.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay. So the problem move second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Wait, wait a minute. Oh, we taking it off the table. Okay.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Okay. Do we have a motion now for an appointment?
A commotion to appoint Winston Wade to the DDA.
Support. The problem move is supported, discussion.
Yeah, I just have a question. Since there seemed to be some reticence last, at the last meeting regarding this appointee, is it something that maybe those people who work on that board should weigh in on?
No.
No?
That's our job responsibility.
I understand that, but we don't work on a day-to-day basis with this subject, or we don't work on a monthly basis with this subject. And as I stated, there was some reticence about his attendance.
I think one of the issues was attendance. I did receive some additional information. Did you guys get it, too?
Yeah.
I think it's attendance from last year, and maybe even the year before, if I'm not mistaken. It was a couple years of attendance records. And, you know, I don't know what else. I'm not, I don't want to comment on them, but I did receive that information, so.
Yeah, but the current policy says three and you're out.
Well, if you go by the current policy, he's out right now. So, but someone can nominate him and they have to be reappointed. Even if he's off, he can be reappointed. So that's where we're at. So that's where we're at today. He missed three meetings in a row this year, correct?
I don't believe that they were in a row.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think we're in a row, not the ones you said else.
Well, we have to keep in mind that the reason this policy was implemented to begin with was to ensure quality as well as competency, as well as commitment.
Me, too.
And if none of that is occurring, then.
But see, I have that, I have the impression I need to vote. I mean, is everybody comfortable, they ready to go? We, we know his attendance records. Is anything else anybody wants to talk about?
Well, just something to understand that it's, um, rule, or the bylaws says, um, be, you know, back-to-back, not like here, like here, one, there. Now, if someone wants to change the policy, you know.
Ms. Fields, is that, it has to be back-to-back, or is it three in a year?
Honestly, I have not read the bylaws of the DDA, so I'm not sure if it is, um, identifies it in a year, or in a quarter, or anything like that, so I can't answer that question.
Okay.
It's three, three consecutive meetings, consecutive back-to-back.
That's what their bylaws say.
Okay.
My, my question is.
Go ahead, no, no, go ahead.
My, my question, and I think I raised it at the last meeting, I thought it would be appropriate that we made contact with him, let him know.
I think, did you talk to him? Oh, you talked to him? Okay. Is there any information you want to give to him in contact?
No, 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 I just, long, as, long as we, you know, let him know what's going on, the fact that he's being considered to be removed.
Oh, no, 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 he's, he's being considered to be appointed.
To be appointed.
Not removed.
Well, I thought that we talked about him being notified that he would be being considered to be removed.
He was, right? Well, I don't know about removed, but.
But I did talk to him. He was a constituent.
He was still a constituent, so he still wants.
I probably used the wrong word.
That's all right, that's all right. Okay, we have a motion.
So what was said during this con- conversation?
Timmy? What was said during this conversation was the question?
Uh, that he was interested in still remaining on the board.
We knew that.
Okay.
I'm trying to ascertain if he gave some sort of, uh, input as to why there's been some issue with.
Oh, due to his, his business, it, um, it kept him from attending meetings, but he says he has that cleared up.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes.
We'll watch.
Okay, we have anybody else on the boards and commissions? That's it? Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. We have now a second reading. Go ahead, Madam Quirk.
A second reading and approval to amend the existing ordinance to adopt by reference the water supply cross-connection rules of the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, being ruled R 325.1401 to R 325.11407 of the Michigan Administrative Code. The proposed amended or, amended ordinance will add provisions to require the installation and testing of backflow assemblies and to establish penalties for violations of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the amendment of the existing ordinance.
Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
A second reading and approval to amend the medical marijuana business license to include an additional licenses in three categories: transportation of medical marijuana, distribution of medical marijuana, and testing of medical marijuana.
Do we have a motion?
I move the approval to amend the medical marijuana business to be aligned with the state of Michigan.
Support.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consideration and approval of the acquisition of properties under the Wayne County Treasurer's 2017 First Right of Refusal and transfer of the properties, along with one city-owned property, to selected developers to participate in the Inkster Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
I move for approval. Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consideration and approval of a special event for the Commission on Aging Senior Picnic on August 4th, 2017, from 11:30 a.m. until 2:30 p.m. in Wheatley Park.
A move?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consideration and authorization of staff to continue future contracts with Able Demolition, Blue Star Inc., DMC Consultants, Inc., Homridge, McMillan Group, Inc., and Van Ash Construction, LLC, to provide asbestos and hazardous abatement and demolition services for up to two years upon a successful bid.
A move? Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consider a street closure on Stoneman between Shadow Lawn and John Daly on July 29th, 2017, from 3 o'clock p.m. until 10 o'clock p.m. Jessica McRath is the applicant, and this is for a block party slash, um, birthday party.
Approve the street, um, I move that we approve the street closure on Stoneman between Shadow Lawn and John Daly on July 29th, from 3 to 10.
Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consider purchase of 2590 Michigan Ave, and consider purchase of 4437 Inkster Road from the Wayne County Treasurer's 2017 First Right of Refusal Program for tax-foreclosed property in the amount of $24,097.34 and $11,581.79 respectively.
Do we have a motion?
I make a, go ahead.
Okay, it's been moved, do we have support? Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Consider approval to purchase New York 26, I'm sorry, 26641 New York, which is located on the south side of New York, between Princes and John Daly, and is legally described as duly noted, in the amount of $7,267.10. Platinum Real Estate Holdings is the applicant.
A move, Mr. Chair? It's been moved, properly moved, we got a support?
Support.
Okay, discussion?
Um, I thought this was for both of them.
It is.
Don't mean. I gave the total.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right.
So it's two properties we're talking about. Any other questions, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consideration and approval of a, do you want me to say updated?
Yeah.
Consideration and approval of an updated purchasing policy.
A move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consideration and approval of an updated cash management policy?
A move?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion?
It's not the same thing as the, the policy?
Two different things.
Mm-mm. Two different things. What exactly does?
Cash management policy. Mr. Treasurer, why don't you explain to us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's, it's given policies for how we, um, handle cash in terms of, uh, collections in the treasurer's office.
Okay, this was referenced during orientation when you were talking about twice a week.
Deposits, exactly.
Okay, all right, okay.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consider acceptance of 511 Magnolia, which is located on the east side of Magnolia between Emerson and Somerset, and is legally described as duly noted. This item, this house is for demolition under the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Move the acceptance of the 511 Magnolia, be it to the city.
Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion?
Just a question, um, there's no, there's nothing owed on this property. Whatever.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
He voted.
You don't get to vote. Motion pass anyway. Oh, man. Okay, now it ends the new business. Now we go to public participation. We already have public participation. We're going to have some more. Tony Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Treasurer, City Clerk, Department Heads, those in the audience, those viewing, um, beautification, we're up here to you, to remind everyone for the month of July, our cleanup will be the last Saturday of this month, which will be the 29th. Um, we will have, um, beautification, we will be up at the rec center at 9 a.m. We're normally up there till like one or two, you know, different ones who need trash bags or gloves. We will be checking around the dumpsters, you know, for the oversight of those that's not dumping inside the dumpster, but, uh, around it in the park. And the locations of the dumpsters, um, is at Wheatley Park, uh, at the rec center, at the rec center, LeMoyne Park, and, uh, Westwood Park. So that's just a reminder. Um, before we sit down, I also want to say that the Inkster Summer Music Fest, my hat goes off to Patrick and Ruthie. We had nothing but good reviews coming through. A lot of the different ones, they can't wait till next year, and, um, when I was deployed as the cert member, we were on, uh, uh, shoveling the people, and they were surprised that we would pick them up, you know, from where their vehicle was, and take them up to, you know, where the, uh, fest was, or we'll take them back home. We just told them, just flag us down if you see us and stuff, and they were surprised when we say, you need a ride, you need a ride, and a lot of people were surprised on that, so a lot of people can't wait till next year. Some people, they will come early during the day, and then they'll go back home, they say, I'm going to be back later tonight, and we'll see them, they'll come back tonight. So some, a lot of the people in the community, they came both days, and we had people from, you know, other cities and from other state, you know, coming, and they say they really enjoyed themselves. So my hat goes out.
All right. You know what? We can't get rid of all that paper, because remember, you know, Ten Commandments written in stone. You know, some stuff we got to hold on to, some of the. We're going to keep the stone, we're getting rid of the paper. Thank you. Deborah Owens.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, evening.
Um, for the third time, I'm up here to say that we need a public relations person. I don't know if you guys are working on it, or what. The reason I say that, because I read the Eagle newspaper, July 6th through the 12th, and the information on there was very disturbing. From the other cities like Belleville Enterprise, it said a National Postal Museum for permanent ex- exhibition, they're advertising that. The Canton Eagle said that they're having a night, a Thursday night concert. Um, the Northville Eagle says they have a Country Garden Club tour this year that includes tours of private homes. The Plymouth Eagle says Sunday morning skateboarders and longboarders help clean up downtown streets. The Romulus Roman said that retailing giant, amazon.com, will, will be coming to their city, bringing, uh, 1,600 jobs. The Wayne Eagle said that they have downtown days beginning Thursday, the 13th, and they're going to have a cruising, uh, US 12 following that. And then the Westland Eagle said the Westland Farmers Artisan Market will be, welcome children of all ages during Kids Day. And the Inkster Ledger Star said, "All charges have been dropped against a 22-year-old father accused of mistreatment in the death of his eight-month-old daughter in Inkster." So I'm just saying all of this to say, all the other cities have positive news, we have negative news. If we're going to build up this city, we've got to get a PR person who's going to build it up and say, I mean, why does all of these other cities have all this positive information? And they pull the most negative information from the newspaper and say about Inkster. Um, some time ago, I said that a University of Michigan person was here from Career Services, and, uh, they said that we could get a public relations internship, which would be free to the city. We need to do something about our name. If we're trying to bring businesses here, if we're trying to do really good things, we need, uh, Theola Jones used to write, uh, articles about the city and, and monitor those. We need somebody who's going to do that for us, because we can do everything we want to do, I mean, that we think that it is possible to build a city up, but until we stop this negative press from happening to our city, we're not going to go anyplace. So I'm just asking you and pleading with you to check into the internship, uh, and Career Services from the U of M, and get a free intern if that's possible, because we need positive press.
All right, Ms. Fields, put on your list, look at doing RFP for, for those services. We just, just as you know, we did discuss, I think we need a professional. I don't think we need an intern. Um, for what we're trying to do, what we need to do, I think we need to hire somebody. And we did, we did talk to one firm, and, but we, since we're a city, we need to put it out for proposal, for bid, so we can get some other competing, uh, quotes.
But that's even more important, important in my opinion, than even purchasing property of goods purchased, but we need to get our name back.
True.
We need to get it out. We need to do something about that right away.
Okay. All right, Ruthie, Ruthie Williams.
I'm still hurting from last week. Um, first of all, I'd like to say, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I come before you, before the Inkster Summer Fest committee, we had a little mix-up, because Mr. Willey's out of town, but we want to come back in, uh, August. But I'd like to say to all the council people from Kim, other than Connie, and I understand why now, Connie, but I'd like to say, I know you guys all enjoyed yourself.
Mm-hmm.
Did you hear? Did you, did you? All right, well, you know, we got outstanding debt with the city, about $7,800, and we're hoping that when we meet, we can waive that. You know, that, I mean, out of all, all, all the things that we had costs for, only a little cost with the city, police, fire, and DPS, so we're hoping you guys can consider waiving that $7,800.
Can you pronounce it?
Yeah, I'm, don't flip me on.
I cannot pronounce the first name, but I think the last name looks like Graziano. Sedell? Just like G, the first name is G-R-A-Z-I.
Graziano. Okay.
Oh, Graziano. Okay, Calloway?
Graziano.
Oh, Graziano, okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to know if there any update regarding Chase after me being here two months ago?
We're supposed to meet with him last Tuesday or Wednesday, I forget, but they canceled the meeting, um, and said they need to reschedule, and they have yet to reschedule a date.
Uh, typical, typical. Anyway, uh, Mr. Chisholm isn't here, but he's launching, and several other people are launching a, um, peaceful campaign, a protest on this Friday at 12 noon for the lunch hour, so if people, you know, audience can just let, come up and launch a peaceful campaign, and if you can't be there, it's a website to contact Chase to let them know that we do care about our banks in Inkster, and the people in Inkster really do need a bank, and that we are very disappointed they're leaving.
Where is the protest at?
In the parking lot. We just going to block traffic. So any police? So any police here, y'all just be prepared to, to...
What date?
This Friday. And we would love some, uh, some, some of you all to be there and speak if possible.
I hope you decide not to block the driveway.
Oh, we'll see. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. On rope.
Well, good evening, my city council.
Good evening.
I am officially a resident of Inkster now, so I wanted to just come before you as my first official, uh, duty as a citizen to, uh, be in attendance. First, I wanna say, uh, I, I did attend the Summer Fest on Saturday, and bravos and kudos to the committee and, uh, the way it was held and everybody else that was, it was just a great event. Also, I'm about, uh, a prevention specialist for SOAR, and we're doing suicide prevention workshops for organizations and churches. I sent a email to, um, Chief Riley as well, and Lieutenant Twardzik, and they're looking at, uh, being trained, uh, during the training in September. So I also opened up the door to, you know, other municipalities, organizations, and churches as well. July 22nd, Financially Fit Home Buyers Education, uh, will be at the Old Cherry Hill High School with organizations SOAR, Starfish, Flagstar Bank, and the City of Inkster. And the illustrious Connie, uh, Councilwoman Connie Mitchell has been, uh, on the, on the case for you guys as, as far as supporting it. Also, we're in the process of talking with the city about doing eco-friendly homes in different areas to also help with the inventory as far as, you know, the lack of, uh, houses, like foreclosures and everything else. And Inkster has a lot of vacant land, uh, where the schools have been torn down over on Kiwaden by old railroad. And now what we're actually doing is bringing in, uh, economic development for the city as well, as providing, uh, homes for the people who are going through the homebuyer education seminar, now returning tenants into homeowners, and of course, increasing the, uh, tax base for the city of Inkster, as well as also bringing different commercial, uh, businesses into the city. As well as the, uh, homebuyer's education seminar, uh, I mean, financially fit, there's also, I was told that, uh, there's also grants available, uh, and Mr. Ken Chambers will talk more on that.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, uh, distinguished citizens of the City of, uh, Inkster. Just, I just quickly wanted to add, on the 22nd event, you know, we have a home-buying, a home loan, uh, program. That home loan is very, very new to the City of, uh, the City of Inkster. We fought very hard to get that in. It has some exciting parts to it, but I'm gonna talk about just a couple of them real quick. What we were able to do, where we were able to decrease the credit scores from 650 to 600, so we could get more people who could qualify for those loans. In addition to that, we got an approval to extend out different grants that we have for, for people to buy the houses, and they could take this grant money and apply it directly to the house. So we have a $15,000 grant, a $7,500 rehab grant. If you need to fix your, uh, you need to fix your, uh, roof, you can fix your roof with that.
Mr. Chambers?
A $5,000 grant, yeah.
Your time is up. I don't know if you wanted to fill out a form so that you can, um, come and speak again.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna conclude. But we do have exciting things, you know, exciting things for folks on that. But I'll give you a quick example. We did one property, it was $35,000. We got the $15,000 grant, got the number down to $20,000, and, uh, the lady's mortgage was, uh, $104 a month. You know, so that's the kinda exciting thing that we expect to have, you know, for the City of Inkster in this program. Last thing, uh, of course, Chambers Realty is with that, and Pinnacle Realty, uh, in the City of, uh, Inkster looked at also.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Ricky L. Oh, he left? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. You talked to him? Okay. Ernest Hendricks. He left? Okay. Officer Lebo. He did that a couple times.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just wanna say that I too had an amazing time at the Summer Fest. I was there both Saturday and Sunday, and it was so much fun. Great food, great entertainment, even better people to spend the days with. I just wanna say thank everyone for coming out and really making my job easy. It was so much fun. So, now I'm done with business. Um, few events to, um, to bring up. We have the movie night, of course. We had to cancel the last one unfortunately because of the rain, so we are still showing The Princess and the Frog. Once again, we'll have free popcorn, free snow cones, and also, um, Detroit Scoops has agreed to come out and give out free ice cream. The movie will be at around 8:30. Detroit Scoops will be out around 8:45. So I hope that everyone can come, watch the movie, have a good time. Last event was a lot of fun, and I, uh, and to anticipate this one being equally a good time. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Friday, August, or Friday, July 28th at 8:30, the Police Department Parking Lot. And secondly, we have the Next Bake Sale, which we have quarterly. This one is going to be Wednesday, August 9th, Police Department Parking Lot, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., held by the Inkster Commission on Aging, and the wonderful ladies and their delicious baked goods. Please come on out to support youth programming. Thank you.
What was the time again?
Uh, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Movie night, 28th at 8:30.
Shirley Shocker.
Bake Sale? August 9th.
Hello.
Everybody. How's everyone tonight? Good evening. Okay, um, I wanna say one thing fast. I wanna thank everybody who remembered to pray, on Pray for City of Inkster Day. Okay, so I'm assuming you got my letter? I sent a letter. Some members of the block club thought, rather than have it in secret, I needed to read it out loud. So I'm gonna do that. Dear Inkster Mayor Nolan and Council Members, this written communication represents my new approach to verbal pleas I have been making to various mayors, city managers, and council members for over 30 years, so I'll be as brief as possible. As a resident of the city and taxpayer for city services, including access to park and recreation facilities, I and my neighborhood have been denied any regular benefits for this particular tax. I have lived on Jeffrey Lane since 1972. It was a winter move. I bought there particularly because I was told the home border to Neighborhood Mark Park, some playground equipment was visible. Under the federal Title VI law, the City of Inkster has discriminated against the overall area from Cherry Hill to Michigan Avenue, and Henry Ruff Road to Middle Belt Road for too many years. However, presently, I am only focused on the area south of Avondale to Michigan Avenue and Henry Ruff Road to Middle Belt Road, where I have garnered neighborhood concern and support. Fortunately, I saw the city's website and planned for the parks improvement funds. Again, the same parks were scheduled for improvements, including Penn Wheatley Wy Park for new bleachers. I noticed one new thing on the schedule, but again, on the border of the city, Kennedy Park. Good, it's about time, but that has nothing to do with Parkwood Park in my neighborhood or section of the city. Children down the street from me are playing basketball in a street that runs along the park. Children should not need to cross busy Middle Belt Road endangering their lives for a playground or basketball court. The Middle Park Manor Block Club had to block off the street for an activity that could have been held around the corner in a decent park, not even a trash can. In closing, this is my nice request to ask the mayor, who knows my sincerity, and council members to reconsider the parks and recreation plan, leave out new bleachers or something else, I don't care what, at this point. Put something, refurbished baseball field, basketball court, swings, play scape, et cetera, in the Parkwood Park this year. Something that resembles the equipment that the city reported to the state already was in the park in previous plans. Otherwise, we'll be in court for Title VI violations before this year's out. The city will put something there or refund our tax dollars for years of neglect and discrimination. Thank you for your attention to this request. I'll have the numerous other signatures by the time you receive a copy of the formal complaint. Have you all had a chance to look at this, and what is your answer?
Answer? In order to furnish a new park, of course, we would have to do a budget amendment.
It's not a new park.
Well, in order to change the budget that we already approved a few weeks ago, we would have to do a budget amendment. Our first budget amendment is scheduled in the fall every year. So we would have to look at the prior plan that you're talking about, see what it costs to furnish that particular park. That's something we have not done with general fund money, and I can't even, I can't even tell you how long. We do have a Parks and Recs mileage, but we would have to, like I said, change the budget, take some money from somewhere else.
We don't care. We don't care where you take it from. We want something in Parkwood Park. This, the city has previously submitted reports to the state mischaracterizing what they have put in that park. And as you know, is blank. I didn't say it was you. I, I, I said, they have submitted previous plans to the state. You all have the records, you can look at them. Just go back five years, look at that one, especially 2009. It's just a farce. So I don't know if you all need to hire an investigator to find out where the money went, who got it, but it didn't go in that park, and we want a park. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Marion Sims.
Good evening, City Council and everyone here. I just moved here to Inkster in February, and I have a concern that I would like to address. We have a new bike trail park that was established off of Justine and Riverview Drive. I stay on the corner of Riverview Drive and Justine. It has its ups and its downs, its positive and its negative. The negative are, there are people coming from the other side off of Inkster Road going to our site with motorized vehicles, auto range vehicles, loud motorcycles, that's disturbing the peace, the ordinance, and then we have people that shouldn't be over there, I believe are child predators that's lurking around, looking at my neighbors' children. One approached my daughter. I don't appreciate it. They just moved in. It's just a lot of confusion. Then we have people that's coming from the bike trail, that's knocking on doors, especially mine, trying to see if there's anyone home. So I just would like for some type of security for everyone in the neighborhood, see if there's something that could be done. That's the problem I would like to address.
Commander Radloff, could you let her know, uh, that, that issue was brought to our attention a few meetings ago, I believe?
Yeah.
And we, we did do some proactive action, but just let her know what we, we did.
Well, uh, after the last meeting, we, we met with the state police, we met with the police office, and, uh, who actually have jurisdictions over, over the park patrols in Wayne County Parks. They were shocked, uh, as it relates to the, uh, the number of people that were actually using that bike trail. Number one, number two, they, they were not aware that it was even, uh, in the Justine and Riverview area. So, uh, they're developing a plan now. They're working on some things that I'm not gonna discuss here today, but they are working on some things to address your issues. And we have, we have directed our police officers to, uh, do special attention checks as well as our auxiliary police. So we're gonna be beefing up patrols in that area. We'll do what we can.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Linda Frey.
All due respect to everybody here, okay, but I have some negativity to say. Back, um, before that path was put in, there was, before it was developed, brush area was so thick, humans could not even get through it to enter through the neighborhoods. Now it's open, open to season, uh, it's open season to vagrants. My husband has lived, his grandfather had that house built in the 50s. He's lived there all his life. Emergency vehicles can get, and we were told that, uh, the openings there is wide because they need emergency vehicles to get into the park. Well, they can exit, they can entrance at the light and move the guardrails off of Inkster, or, what is that, Columbia is the street next to it? Colonial.
Colonial.
Okay.
You said move the guardrails?
Well, there's guardrails there on Inkster Road where there's a light.
Yes.
And there's, uh, a walkway path you can get through.
Right.
Open up the guardrails. There's pavement right there. I mean, it's just like what you got. So there's no reason for the fence to have been removed, because the City of Inkster put the fence up there. And it was better. And, um, um, the signs are there, but nobody looks at them. We get mopeds and cars and trucks coming in and out all the time. They're driving on the sidewalks. They're almost running over their children. There's three homes right there, and there's about 10 or 12 kids that are there, uh, on a daily basis. You know, grandmother watches some other kids too. So there's three homes right there that have about 10 or 12 kids. We had an instance last week, uh, and I, I noticed a guy stalking a nine-year-old outside of my house. I didn't wanna take my eyes off the girl. I mean, she was smart enough to run up into her grandparents' driveway across the street, and the guy finally left. We gave all the descriptions and everything to everybody. The same person that stalked Asia. Little kids, we're just, you know, it's so dangerous. The neighbor across the street said, uh, her little girl almost got ran over by those flying through. And they do fly through, which you know about. There's nowhere for the bikes and pedestrians to go except into our neighborhoods, and it's very dangerous to homeowners, just like Marion had said. You know, there's some people that work during the day. We're not seeing some of that stuff, uh, unless you've got cameras or something to, to tell you about it. It should not have been routed through a residential area like that. People are sitting in cars on the streets, doing drugs. We tried to call the police. I discussed it with them already. Basically, they tell us now, um, is there no parking sign? And we say, "No." Well, there's not much we can do about that.
Right.
You already know what's going on.
Sure.
People come at certain times of the day.
Ms. France? I'm sorry, but, um, your three minutes are up.
Am I up? Am I done?
Yes.
I'm not good at this. Anyway, something's gotta be done, because it's dangerous, especially for the kids.
Okay.
Okay? Really.
Okay. Alright. We will address.
Something's definitely gotta be done. And Darren, you know, he tried to help us out last year.
Okay.
And what you did do worked, until some type of loss of control. And now we've got a bunch of crime and drugs and stuff going on down there all like crazy, so...
Okay. Patricia Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone else. First, I'd like to commend you on the, uh, Summer Fest. It was wonderful.
Yes, it was.
Really enjoyed it. Okay, I wanna know what the policy is on street flooding. Between, I, I live on Hazelwood, between Division and Western, and it was flooded from the 5th through the 8th.
Okay.
They came out and snaked the drain out on the 12th.
Okay.
But every time it rains, our street floods. So it's gotta be something wrong with the drain. You know, some need to be done with that. Every time it's some rain, there's our street flooding.
Floods. I actually have seen it myself. Mr. Bivens, you, are you aware of that area? What's going on? You know what the problem is? Okay. Okay. Can we do anything?
Speaking to the mic, sir.
Speaking to the mayor.
There, it's restricted. It's got to be addressed. It's got to be dug up and probably widened out. It's just restricted right now, so when we get an assessment of amount of rainfall, it's floods right there. And we, yeah, yeah. I, I'm, I'm familiar, yeah. But we, we do have an order of preventive maintenance list, a high priority, so we try to clean it as much as possible.
Okay.
Till we can address that issue.
Okay. You already have estimates on what it requires to address that? Okay. All right. Let's get those. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Pastor Jean Overman.
Good evening, everyone, to our mayor and council administrators and citizens of Inkster. Just want to bring you a couple of updates from Camp Inspire. Campus started. We've had, uh, a great kickoff. We had the math scientists in on our first week and invited down Reverend Williams' young people, which was an exciting day, uh, last week. We were at Michigan Science Center, and the girls all received a scholarship for that, and they actually did some environmental solutions and spent a field trip at the recycle center. Uh, today, on the beginning of Week Three, they actually challenged the, um, Garden City paramedics to a soccer game because we're being hosted by Schoolcraft College. So, just wanted you to know some of the things happening with Camp Inspire. Please like us on Facebook, @CampInsteen, camp, uh, on Facebook. Uh, we need support for, uh, empowering our girls in STEM, so look on the page, there's an opportunity to give. We're having an invention fair. Want you to save the date. You were at our big, uh, camp, um, science fair on last year. This year, we're going to do an invention fair, and we're going to actually patent the, the number one invention. So, pretty excited about our summer camp. Uh, had a couple of things. One, thank you for donating. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for actually giving us a major donation this year. We appreciate that. And those others that's in the sound of my voice that have supported us. There's nothing more valuable than empowering our daughters and the field of STEM because it's such a huge gap. It's non-existent. So, we really want to make some impact in Inkster for girls in science, tech, engineering, the arts, and math. Also, I too enjoy the Summer Fest. Our girls danced on Sunday, and it was packed. It was really live. It was so many wonderful things and reports. We did very well as vendors there. Someone actually paid us $200 for a bottle of water. So, you suppose we did well with, with the vendor, so it was pretty cool there, and, uh, we enjoyed it. Want, uh, the city, thank you for your support. So glad I'm standing in agreement with the Summer Fest team that they'll get some favor in that little bill they have of, I think it's like $7,000. I love those serious faces. Don't fear anything. And then TFAP is the Fourth Thursday at Mother's Pantry. Please spread the word so that the families that do have a need for food know that it's available. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Malika Villanor.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Malika Villanor. I am the Director of Instructional Leadership and Compliance at PG LA. And PG LA stands for Pathways Global Leadership Academy. We're a new school opening up right here in the city of Inkster in the fall. Will be on Parkwood between Henry Ruff and Middle Belt. Um, so I'm here today to really hope that here at the city of Inkster, you all welcome us with open arms. Um, on Wednesday, July 26th, we'll be having a Green Thumb Day, uh, with Councilwoman Watley as well, working on really beautifying our property and ensuring that the city of Inkster knows that we're here with our doors open. We're enrolling students kindergarten through second grade.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Oh, and please, if you'd like more information about the Green Thumb Day, our Facebook page will have information, PG LA Inkster Campus as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council, residents. Just wanted to come up and first of all, thank, um, all of you for that beautiful, um, music and jazz fest. It was fantabulous. It was absolutely fantabulous. It was. It was so good. Um, but I'm coming, also to thank you on behalf of the Inkster Chamber of Commerce. We had our Comedy Night, Laugh, Chill &amp; Hurst this past Saturday. For those of you who did make it, we thank you. For those of you who did support us by purchasing a ticket, we thank you. Next thing, Feeding Inkster is a group that we have in the city of Inkster that helps to teach our children and get our seniors out to help, um, plant and grow seedlings. We meet every Saturday at 10 o'clock if it's no rain the night before or that morning at the plot on, um, John Daly and someone help me with the other street, please. Norfolk? I don't, okay, I don't think. Yale, that's what it is. Thank you. Somebody know about us. So, every Saturday at 10 o'clock, um, on John Daly and Yale, we're out there, or Mr. Garibral and the fellas out there planting and keeping it going. So, if you have some time to volunteer, please come out and volunteer. We have also started our farm stand every Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00, fresh fruits and vegetables, right on the corner of Michigan Avenue, Inkster Road and the old, um, the lot where the courthouse used to be. So, please stop by and support that as well. And Western Wayne Family Health Center. Don't forget, Mondays, we have yoga, free of charge, 6:00 to 7:00. Wednesdays, we have zumba indoor walking, free of charge, 6:00 to 7:00, and we welcome you to come by and just check out Western Wayne Family Health Center, where we have everything, pediatrics, primary care, dental, everything. So, stop by and see us. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Sam, tell Pat we need our husband's email. We need our husband's bio. Tell Pat.
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm getting ready to do.
Hello, family. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
You know, it was, uh, just a statement made about the new school that's going to be opened up on Parkwood, uh, okay, uh, and, uh, I was thinking about that park. You know, our block club, we've been trying to develop that area and, you know, and get everything nice there for the kids and all that. You know, some years back, we had some gangsters that came through there and tore all our equipment out, good equipment and all that. We could have just upgraded the ground area and left all the, but you know, a good thing, the school is coming there, the kids that's coming there to school, they need the playground equipment. We all get together and we can make this happen because the idea of location for, and the service to kids in that neighborhood and service to school, and, uh, we're going to really get it together. We need it. It was there before, and we're going to get it back like it was, and even better.
Mm-hmm.
I know we're working together, we can do it. We can do it. And thank you for allowing me to say something on that. God bless you all. I always remember, you know, hey, uh, you know, we'll always do our best. We're going to let God do the rest. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay, that's, that's it for public comment. We have a city clerk. Do you have anything?
Yes, um, the city clerk's office is gearing up for the, um, August 8th Romulus Special School District, um, election. If you're interested, um, in working for the elections, please give me a call at 313-563-9770. Also, um, in the near future, I plan on holding an open house for the, um, voting equipment so that residents can come out and experience the voting equipment and see the new equipment that we have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Treasurer.
Um, just real quickly, um, property tax payments are, um, being, uh, accepted. As of July 1st, you can pay your property taxes. Uh, you can pay by check, cash, or credit card here at City Hall. You can also utilize lockbox and, uh, can pay online. And payments are, um, due through August 31st without any, uh, extra interest or penalty.
Okay. Tax time. Okay, Councilwoman Watley.
Uh, thank you. I am advising, um, the residents in the area of the old Inkster district that has the Romulus Millage that, uh, Councilman Williams.
Me and Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did I demote him?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Mayor Proton Williams. And I, along with Councilman Chisholm and Voice, will be putting on a forum to, uh, discuss the new millage that they're assessing against the people who live in that area. We plan on doing this, uh, Thursday, July 27th at 6:00 PM. We intend to be at the Floyd B. Simmons Center because that's right over in the area where the taxes are, um, occurring, and that's 29150 Carlisle. Uh, you should come out and learn the facts concerning that millage and how it impacts you, advantages and disadvantages. As usual, we will have pro and con speakers and, uh, hopefully, um, uh, people from the Romulus School District as well as Risa. So, that's going to be July 27th at 6:00 PM at the Floyd B. Simmons Center at 29150 Carlisle. Need any additional information? As I stated, you can contact either Proton Williams or, uh, uh, Councilman Chisholm or myself. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilman Oden.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I, I learned from, um, Mr. Bivins this evening. I saw some repairs that was being made along Michigan Avenue and, which was needed real badly, and, uh, want to acknowledge the fact that, that the county came through and made some changes along there so the ride is a little bit smoother than what it was. And, uh, I also have to bring up the Summer Fest. It was just outstanding. The thing that I got, the thing that I liked the most out of it was the fact that people were all cordial toward each other. It was, it was just, uh, like a breath of fresh air because normally, there's always something crazy going on, having, everybody was greeting and talking and having a good time. I just enjoyed it. It was one of the best that I have experienced. And I just want to thank everybody that was involved, the committee, everyone that was involved. It was really outstanding. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Just congratulations to the Summer Fest committee, and we're looking forward to next
Okay, Councilwoman Howard.
Captain Nittis.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Um, to the administration, there I was riding down Cherry Street and got, hello, going on Spring Hill, and I noticed there's a pothole. Uh, before, there was a orange cone there, orange cone is missing, but some citizens took some, it took two tires to put over the hole that's in the middle of the street to cover the hole. That hole's been there for several weeks now, so, um, city can take care of that, get that hole patched up and be appreciated. I was going to say something about Inkster Road, but Michigan Avenue, but Councilman Owen got to that. I have to say thank you, uh, also to the Summer Fest committee, my colleagues. I was, it was a great pleasure working with them. It was challenging, but it was, it was great. As Ruthie Williams said, you know, we spent a, we spent a lot of money. Well, we want to say, I want to say personally, thank you to all the sponsors who actually made it possible. Because without, without the money, it wouldn't have happened. So, we just, uh, we should give the sponsors a round of applause for making this happen. And shop Inkster. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Uh, there was a presentation earlier today, and we get these nice little boxes of popcorn and some cookies.
Those popcorn?
Yeah, that's popcorn. And it was actually made by one of our citizens here in Inkster that I was talking with Nate Ford about, you know, in the presentation, and she makes these cookies also, and we're trying to work on these pop-up business or incubators for the community. So, um, the proud father is sitting here right now, Mr. Hearn, his daughter made these cookies, and, uh, we're hoping to partner with, um, um, Applewood. So, go by Applewood, get yourself some cookies and popcorn. Thank you.
Invite her to the lunch with the mayor.
Right. She's, she's, she has an open invitation to the lunch. We actually have a lunch with the mayor on Thursday, so we'll come out, we'll talk about the Summer Fest, talk about some things we want to do next year. It would be wonderful if we could do a summer concert series and have something going on all summer next year, and still do the Summer Fest, which is huge, obviously, the two-day affair. So, we're going to be working towards that. That was part of, uh, the things we said we were going to work on when we took office. So, we're going to look forward to doing that. Um, I think, I, I want to say the same thing everybody else said, but the Summer Fest was excellent. All the feedback I received back was purely positive. The organization was incredible. I mean, I was shocked. You know, I got out of my car, they put me in a golf cart and ride me up. I'm like, oh, they treating me all special because I'm the mayor. No, they did that for everybody. So, after I realized that, I didn't feel as, as special, but I was happy to see what was going on. People just had a great time. Like, you didn't want to leave. I think I stood out there on Saturday, what's that, eight, nine hours? You know, you just, because you don't want to miss nothing. And then Sunday, I went back for the gospel, and that was incredible, you know? Um, it definitely made our city look good, and those are the type of events we want to have all the time. So, everyone, look at that sponsor list and understand what community partners are investing back in your community. That was a huge budget. They gave that money. They didn't get anything in return, other than a great event and people being happy. So, please patronize those businesses that, that take care of you and support our community. I think so. Seven, yeah, we need to get 7,000 more from somebody. So, you taxpayers don't have to foot that bill. You know? But other than that, it was, it was definitely a great time. I'm ready for another event.
They said, why hasn't Chase for that one? Ah, yeah.
If they ever get here, if they ever get here, definitely. Um, and I just want everybody to know, Steve Chisholm asked to sit in on the meeting with Chase if they ever meet with us, to discuss the whole issue, uh, and, and the pushback that the residents are giving. I said, of course, you're welcome to sit in on the meeting. So, hopefully, we'll, we get that rescheduled and we'll deal with that. Um, other than that, we're working hard just to make. Hmm? Oh, they're, they're leaving. Let's, let's not get it twisted. It's just a matter of, uh, what do we get out of this deal other than losing a bank? And now, we already, we're already working on some other stuff anyway, but, you know, we, we need to have a meeting with them because they made this decision without communicating with us at all as a government, which is their right. They're a business. They don't owe us anything, but we at least asked for a meeting, hopefully, they'll show up, and then we can discuss some things from, from that point moving forward. We've already met with Chase a couple of times anyway, but that was prior to finding out that they were going to close the, the building. So, we will be, and we will let you know what comes out of that meeting as soon as we have it. All right. I think that.
We forgot one thing. The fireworks. Nobody mentioned the fireworks, but the fireworks was outstanding as well. I had to say that too.
Yep.
I, I got to say, we have a problem because we found out that habitat down there, so we had to move her back into the woods, and when he do shells, he do shells for a certain area, or next year, we going to get bigger shells, six of the shells.
Okay. All right, it's a work in progress, but it was overall excellent, excellent. Look forward to it for next year.